I would like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 12th day of November 2020. Please rise and join us for the pludgulations.
The flag of the United States of America, and the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
All right. Councilwoman Lofstad?
Here.
Councilwoman Martel?
Present.
Councilwoman Bouvier?
Here.
Councilwoman Skivon?
Present.
All right, so we're all here. Let's start today with a conversation regarding our town ethics code. We are joined by Steve Leventhal, who's our advisor to the Ethics Board, and Kathleen Murray, deputy town attorney, who serves as our legal counsel to the Town Ethics Board. Stephen, would you come forward? We had discussed this topic some time ago where we were looking to make some modifications to the Town Ethics Code, and then we sort of stopped for some reason. It sort of disappeared for a while, but we'd like to try to revive this a little bit, this conversation, and see if we can make these changes. So, Steve, do you want to take us through it?
Sure. Is it appropriate to remove my mask while I speak, or keep it on?
As long as you're six feet from people, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for this opportunity to appear before you this morning. I'd like to begin by noting that the Board includes two members who were not members of the Board at the time that this proposal was first discussed. So if they or any other member of the Board would like at any time for me to meet personally or in a small group to walk through the proposal and answer any questions, I would be happy to do that at any time. I'd like to briefly state how this proposal came to be and why we felt that this was an opportune time to renew the conversation about it. This, a code very similar to this one, basically this code with certain local variations, has been adopted by the town of Huntington, the town of Oyster Bay, the town of Hempstead, the village of Sag Harbor, the village of Southampton, and is currently working its way through the Westchester County Legislature and appears to be well on the way to adoption by Westchester County. In drafting this code, we began with Article 18 of the New York General Municipal Law. That is a law of statewide application that contains a code of conduct that applies to every municipality in the state with the exception of the City of New York. In drafting the local code of ethics, the Town Code, we wanted to avoid setting a trap for an honest but unwary member of the town workforce who might look at the Town Code, not see a prohibition that exists in the state law, assume that the Town Code had all of the rules in it that they need to obey, and then engage in some good faith unintentional ethics violation. So, we believe in one-stop shopping. We want it to have all the rules collected in a single place, and we've done that. And I should say that the guiding principle here is that both logic and experience indicate that the vast majority of town officers and employees, the vast majority of government officers and employees elsewhere, like the vast majority of people, are basically honest, want to do the right thing, and will follow the rules if they're helped to understand what those rules are. So we want to have a clear and comprehensive code that really is aimed at achieving two goals. The first is to guide and protect honest officers and employees of the town and to help them understand what their obligations are, so that they can avoid unintended ethics violations before they occur. We are not interested in emphasizing enforcement. We're interested in emphasizing prevention. We want to prevent ethics violations before they occur. The second goal of the Ethics Program, of course, is to ensure not only the reality but the appearance of integrity in government, because public confidence is a necessary component of a democratic government, and we want to inspire public confidence in town government by ensuring that the town is not only operating with integrity but that it appears to be doing so. So, this code of ethics draws from Article 18 of the New York General Municipal Law. It draws from a model code prepared by the New York State Comptroller, which was a helpful reference but not nearly as comprehensive a document as the one that's before you. It draws from cases that have been decided by judges in particular ethics disputes that have come before the courts and where judges have made a ruling that has general application. We've incorporated those principles. And we've also incorporated the literature that's been developed in this area. Many people don't realize that there is a whole body of not only case law out there but learned treatises, law review articles, publications by government associations like the New York State Association of Towns, the New York Conference of Mayors, and other such organizations. So we drew from all of those many sources. This proposed code is a complete rewrite and reorganization of the code. To advance the goal of clarity and ease of use, we've divided it into three basic sections. The first section is a code of conduct. It contains the rules regarding conflicts of interest and other such issues. The second section gathers in a single place all of the disclosure requirements. And the third section is the administrative portion of the code. It talks about the powers and duties of the Board of Ethics and how the Ethics Program will be administered. Adoption of the new code of ethics, if this Board chooses to do so, is really step one in what I view as a three-step process for organizing and implementing a modern, effective Ethics Program. And I guess I should say, in making these proposals and in saying the things that I'm doing, I do not mean at all to say that the current Ethics Program of this town isn't operating in an excellent manner. I have been fortunate enough to be counsel to the Board of Ethics for many years now, and it is diligent in its work, it is thoughtful in the way it approaches the issues that come before it, and we've handled many very interesting questions that have come up and been, I like to think, helpful to the officers and employees of the town.
When was that, the existing Ethics Code written?
2007 was the last major amendment to the code. It was overhauled in 2007. There were slight changes since then, but nothing significant.
Okay.
So, the three steps, it seems to me, are first, adopting a new code; the second is preparing a plain language guide to government ethics, because an ethics code is useless if it can't be understood by the people who must adhere to it. And what I have done, what other municipalities that I represent have done, is prepare a booklet of this type. These are the booklets from several municipalities. And in the front of the booklet is a two-page, simple, plain-language guide followed by pertinent sections of the Code of Ethics. We don't reproduce the code in its entirety because it would make the booklet too long. So we omit the financial disclosure portion, the administrative portions. But this is a very useful tool. It can be placed in the orientation folder of new hires. It can, you know, I carry a dog-eared copy of it around with me all the time, and when I do my work as counsel to an Ethics Board or when the members of the Ethics Board do their work, they have reference to it. There used to be a sportscaster, Warner Wolf, whose catchphrase was "Let's go to the videotape." And I find it always helpful to go back to the code and take a look and then discuss how the code applies to a particular set of facts.
As long as they're perfectly reconciled.
Yes, yes, yes. You mean the plain language guide to the code? Well, both of them will be in the booklet, and there is a conspicuous legend on the top of the plain language guide saying, "This is a tool to help you in understanding the code, but for the actual rules, please refer to the code." So that's the second step, preparing such a plain language guide and booklet. The third step is rolling out the code with a series of ethics training programs. Now, it will be up to you to decide how deeply into the town workforce to penetrate with those ethics programs, whether to train the entire workforce or to focus on elected officials, department heads and deputies, and attorneys. But that is a decision that, at the appropriate time, we can discuss if you wish to involve me in the discussion. The reason this has come up at this moment in time, the reason we felt this was an opportune time to renew this conversation, is because the town's Ethics, the New York State Comptroller recently engaged in a statewide program of auditing selected municipal ethics programs. They selected the municipalities based on geographical diversity and also based upon population, because only a municipality with a population that exceeds 50,000 is required to have a financial disclosure program. So they focused on municipalities with populations above that threshold, and they selected two towns on Long Island, one of which was the town of Southampton, the other the town of Oyster Bay that I also happen to represent as Ethics Counsel. And the report has not yet been issued, but I am pleased to tell you that the town of Southampton did extremely well in the audit, based upon the informal comments, the preliminary comments that we've received from the auditor. And I think that we will, the report will be very favorable for this town. But, one area in which the Comptroller did comment was that during the audit period, which was two particular years, there was no ethics training in the town of Southampton. The reason there was no ethics training, and we informed the Comptroller of this fact, and this statement is in our response to the audit, the reason we didn't engage in ethics training during that period is because this proposal to completely overhaul the Code of Ethics was under consideration by the Board. And we didn't want to train the town workforce on a set of rules that would soon be obsolete. So, we told the auditors that we had decided that we would wait to see what this Board chose to do in the way of amending the Ethics Code, and as soon as it made its decision one way or the other, we would engage in ethics training. And so that is what brings us to today.
Two questions, Steve. One is, how is, it's sort of related to that point you just made, but how is this new Ethics Code different than what's already on the books?
Right.
Oh, could I just add to that?
Yes.
So that you, and you probably know this, but we were caught a little unawares, because we haven't really had a chance to review this material at all. And I know that the Board has been, you know, we just got that in our package this morning, so I think they'll have an opportunity to read this and come back to you.
Yes.
Those questions, instead of taking up the time today to do that.
Right.
All right. But yeah, but if you could sort of give us a general sense of how, because we already have an Ethics Code, how this new document changes things. And then maybe even before that, just kind of an overarching guidance, you know, the Ethics Code, you know, is there to prevent town employees, town elected officials, those who issue permits, whatever, those who make decisions on planning board, zoning board, from taking actions that have an undue benefit to themselves, particularly a financial benefit, but there could be other benefits as well? So that their decision is basically based on self-advancement rather than the people that they represent or the public at large, that there's this undue benefit to themselves, their spouse, their children, their relative, things like that? There's some personal gain that is affecting their decision, right? Is that sort of the core of why we have an Ethics Code?
You have just given a beautiful definition of the term conflict of interest. And yes, the principal goal in terms of regulation is to avoid conflicts of interest, yes.
Right. So if a building inspector issues a permit to somebody without disclosing that that person is their brother, which immediately, even if it was perfectly done, creates the immediate specter of impropriety, you know, that the public would, you know, say, "Should that person really have gotten that permit?"
Absolutely.
You know?
Even in...
That should have been disclosed and probably should have recused that inspector from that, right, in most cases?
Right. Even in innocent conflict of interest, even a situation where an officer or employee has a conflict but takes the action that actually advances the public interest rather than their own, even such an innocent conflict of interest can have the effect of undermining public confidence in government because it reinforces in the mind of a skeptical public the idea that government is being run to benefit the insiders rather than to benefit the public.
Right, exactly. Tommy, I knew you had something you...
It was a question before we, you know, get into the code, really. When were, what was the time period of the audit?
Was it 2017 and 18? 2017 and 18.
Okay.
All right, so Steve, can you just give us some highlights of things that are different about this code versus the current code?
Right. The first, as I said, is that we incorporated all of the rules set forth in the state law for the purpose that I mentioned. There were some inconsistencies between, there are currently some inconsistencies between the Town Code and the state law that we eliminated, so that we are in complete compliance with all the requirements of state law. The code, I, the code was a very good effort in its day, but there were deficiencies in it from a drafting point of view, some of which we've corrected previously, some of which we're correcting now. For example, at one time, this code made any violation, a violation of any provision, a misdemeanor. Well, I have always advised local Ethics Boards that if you're presented with a situation that suggests criminality, do nothing, refer to the DA's office. And so, any situation that arose that presented the possibility of a violation of the code paralyzed the Board of Ethics, and at our recommendation, that was changed. The current code has several pages of defined terms. Defined terms, in my view, are a trap for the unwary, because if you are reading a text, the text of the law, and you don't realize that some word has a meaning other than its plain language meaning, you're bound to misinterpret the code. So, we define only two terms, I believe, in this current proposal. The word "interest," and to define the word "interest," we adopt the definition that's in the state law. And we define the term "relative" because it's a question of judgment as to how wide you want to cast the net when you declare that a town officer or employee may not use their official position in a way that will benefit a relative. How many degrees of separation do you want to go to? And that's a judgment call. In terms, we also have a provision that...
So the definition, excuse me, would be, you would defer to Article 18 in state code as far as...
Well, we don't defer. We incorporated the definition of the word "interest." So, the definition of "interest" in this proposal is identical to the way in which it's defined in the state law. The only other term that we defined was "relative."
Okay.
Any other term, we use the plain language meaning. So, for example, some codes, you define the word "relative" to include members of your household or people who you've claimed as dependents on your tax return. Well, if I'm reading the law and I see the word "relative," I don't assume that it means unrelated people with whom I have some other type of relationship. So, rather than incorporate those relationships in the definition of "relative," in the text you say "relative" or "member of your household," or "relative and a person who you have claimed is a dependent on your tax return," so that it's clear. We're aiming for clarity. We have a provision that actually governs independent contractors. It's somewhat aspirational, but it provides that an independent contractor serving the town will not use their access to achieve an unwarranted benefit for another client or customer of the independent contractor. We want to have a level playing field, and we want there to be the appearance of a level playing field. The, from, here's a significant change from an administrative point of view. I'm not sure what the current code provides, but this code provides that the members, that no more than two members of the Board of Ethics belong to the same political party. So there is a...
Well, I'm sorry, that's not what I...
It's the same.
Yeah.
The previous.
That's the same, okay.
But there's a different, you have a different definition. I mean, you know, if you want to get it, that's where I was trying to find out how much detail to get into. I mean, on the new one, you have, "No member of a Board of Ethics shall be an officer or a member of a state, town, or county party committee as defined by the New York State Election Law," which is different than our current listing, right? Right now, we have a campaign manager, consultant, or treasurer for a political party committee or individual election campaign committee, or has served in such capacity during the past 24-month period. So, these changes may well affect, I don't know what the makeup of our current Ethics Board is, and I, you know, I tend to favor this for obvious reasons, but, you know, I'm just not sure what the impact is downstream.
Sure. There was a time, during the period I've served as counsel, there was a time when an employee of the town was assigned as a member of the Board of Ethics, but that has long since ceased and has not been the case for many years. I think it's beneficial to codify that notion, and the reason is, it gives the Board a degree of independence, just like having fixed staggered terms for its members does, and just as having the Board elect its own chair has the effect of providing some independence to the Board. In fact, Kathleen serves as the liaison to the county attorney's office and is a very valuable, very important member of the team, but the Board has independent counsel, me, also to provide it with a degree of independence. So, yeah, the problem with having an employee on the Board, many municipal codes provide that the municipal attorney is a member of the Board of Ethics. And I really don't know how many of you are lawyers, but one thing that lawyers learn at a very early time is, if you're choosing a jury, you don't want to have one member of the jury who is so influential that, in effect, you have a jury of one rather than a jury of six. And what often happens is that the municipal attorney is so influential that whatever the municipal attorney says becomes the view of the Board of Ethics. And while the municipal attorney always has very valuable information and advice to provide, we want to have that layer of independence. There are, in my view, four types of bad Boards of Ethics, none of which exist in this town. The first is a Board of Ethics that never meets. If a Board of Ethics isn't meeting, it isn't because officers and employees of the town aren't encountering ethics issues day in and day out, it's because they're not recognizing that they are. We want to have a Board that receives requests for ethics advice frequently enough to require regular meetings, and this code requires the Board of Ethics to meet at least once each quarter. The second type of bad Ethics Board is one that is political. Obviously, a political Board will have no credibility, and that will undermine the whole purpose of the Ethics Program. The third type of bad Ethics Board is one that is under the influence of the appointing authority, as we've already discussed. And finally, it's, the final bad Ethics Board, in my view, is one that doesn't understand its mission. The Board of Ethics, the town of Southampton Board of Ethics, several years ago, received a complaint from a resident who said, "I went to the town recycling center to dispose of a bulk item, and the town employee who works there was rude to me." And that complaint was filed with the Board of Ethics. Now, rudeness is bad. We don't want rudeness anywhere, anytime, but it's not an ethics violation. So people don't really fully understand very often exactly what we mean by an ethics violation. In fact, the supervisor gave us a beautiful definition of it a moment ago, but often people don't understand that. And the Board of, I'm a member of the State Bar Association Local and State Government Law Section, I'm co-chair of their Ethics Committee, and we have developed a proposal which we hope will be adopted by the State Bar as its position and eventually enacted into legislation that would require Ethics Boards to have the same continuing education that is currently required of land use boards. Zoning Boards, planning Boards, planning commissions, those members are required to take regular continuing educational programs, but Ethics Boards are not. And fortunately, the town of Southampton has an excellent Ethics Board that is very well aware of what its duties and obligations are. So, that is, that is a general view. This code is more comprehensive than the old code. Another provision that we felt, found problematic in the old code was that the outside employer of a Board member was precluded from appearing before the Board.
You're talking about the Ethics Board?
No, no, any Board.
Any Board.
Any Board. And that had the effect of discouraging good people, good conscientious, public-spirited, dedicated people from serving on Town Boards. Instead, if that person can recuse themselves and effectively remove themselves from any involvement in the matter handled by their employer, for example, a young lawyer who is an associate at a law firm should be able to sit on a Town Board even though the law firm from time to time has matters before that Board if the recusal of that member is sufficient to cure the conflict of interest.
So we have a situation here where you have a very high standard for the Ethics Board, which I totally agree with, but it's higher than some of the standards that we have applied to our current Boards, particularly when it comes to the one example I'm using here, just as an example, the political committee membership. That's a much higher standard. So are you advocating that? And I agree, I think you are, and I hope you are, because I personally believe in it, that the Ethics Board should be held to a much higher standard as, in terms of its oversight for ethical behavior and disclosures throughout the town, among the, I won't call them lower Boards, the other Boards that sort of stand apart from the Ethics Board.
I absolutely agree with that statement, and it's really not because those standards...
And I'm not a lawyer. I'm an... And I'm not a lawyer, I'm an engineer.
Sure. It's not because, you're better able to understand my business than I'm able to understand yours, so.
Let's find out.
The, um, it, the reason we want more rigorous rules to apply to the ethics board is not because we think the ethics board is going to act inappropriately in the absence of those rules. It's that we want to send a message to the public. And that message is that this Board of Ethics is above politics. Its sole consideration are the merits of the matter, matter before it. You know, we have many boards, members, board members come and go. The party composition changes, elections shift the balance of power one way and then the other way. And yet somehow, we have conscientious, honest members of both parties serving in town government. So it's not as if politics is going to corrupt town government. It's that we want to ensure that the public can be confident that that is not the case.
And assures, as you say, consistency across-
Yes.
The changing landscape of elected officials and so-
You know what the first ethics reform in this country was?
No.
Civil service. To protect the, uh, the infrastructure of government from, from political influences when each election came and went.
Makes sense.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Related to gifts?
Yes.
And in terms of changes from the old code to the new code. And in particular, you know, we as elected officials, you know, in a normal season will get invited to various charitable benefits. And the admission fee is typically, you know, we're often comped to those events because they want us to appear in our official capacities, often to say a word or two, you know, welcome guests, et cetera. The ticket for an event, let's say for the iconic land trust or the animal shelter, might be a $500 ticket or $250 ticket. Is that a conflict in the code? I don't see anything specific language related to that. If you're appearing in your official capacity to accept the meal, let's say, or some of the things that go with the benefit ticket?
If you are appearing in your official capacity, it is absolutely not a conflict to accept the ticket regardless of its price. And if you are there in your official capacity and there is a meal incidental to your presence at the event, there's no conflict in accepting the meal. This questions some kind, you know, and-
Where is that stated in the code, though?
Well-
I was having trouble finding, that's my understanding of it, too, based on the state code.
Well, there, there is a, a list of exceptions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read the exceptions and did not find it clearly.
No, it's, it's, it talks about if you're coming there as a public official.
Here it is. Yep.
It was, it was taken right-
In section 23 dash 17.
23 dash 17. And, um, if you look at F6, incidental meals and refreshments provided when a town officer or employee is a speaker or participant at a job-related professional charitable educational or community conference program or event. That is an exception to the, uh, to the rule.
So in that falls the admission, the, the price of the ticket regardless of the, the cost? So I guess that's built into the cost then of the ticket?
Uh, we, we could add attendance to exception six.
I think we'd make it clearer.
Clearer.
Yes.
Yes, I, I don't know how you want to do this supervisor, because, you know-
No, we can have a work session on it.
I think to go through this, because I certainly haven't had a chance to sort of make the comparison. It's hard to go back, you know, see what we've gained and see what we've lost.
That's why we're doing it at a work session, but you haven't had time to pre-review it.
To review it.
Now, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make you a promise. I, with all, with every good intention, yesterday, I intended to put page numbers on this document. And this morning, before I left my, my home to drive here, I noticed that the page number appears only on page one. So-
Well, it's a start.
It's a start, it's a start. So before we have our next discussion about this, you will have a document with page numbers on it.
Okay, great. And, and, and it would be helpful, if, you know, if you could, that we could do, you know, see where the-
Yeah, maybe a summary of changes that are different.
You were talking about your handbook.
I will, I will, we can, we can do that. What you have before you actually is an annotated version of this law. Each section has some language in bold. The language in bold was only intended to be a note to you. It was not intended to be incorporated in the law. And, and each of those bold introductory statements gives you a little bit of a discussion on where the provision came from and why it's there. But I'll try to amplify that and maybe prepare some kind of summary memo.
That would, that would be helpful, you know, not to add to your burden, but just, you know, maybe helpful for us to-
I think that's fine, you should have the chance to review and digest and ask questions. The, I, I would like to see, though, this not fall between the cracks and get to a public hearing on the ethics code. So maybe we could sort of do this fairly quickly, maybe next week's work session? Would that give you adequate time?
Sure.
Does that give you adequate time to prepare that list of changes? Or do you want to go two weeks from now?
Whatever works, whatever works for the board, I also want to get this done.
Two weeks is Thanksgiving.
I also have a concern, if Ryan is here, we may not be able to do this in person next time. You know, tomorrow, the rules change, no more than 10-
Right.
Indoor gatherings. We're probably roughly 10 right now, if the clerk were present.
But we sound like 20.
So I, I, I want to discuss the issue of whether we're gonna go to do these via Zoom. So it may be a Zoom meeting?
Sure.
Which would be probably good for you, that not have to drive out here.
That's great. And of course, as you all know, with Zoom, there's a screen sharing function.
Yeah, that would be great.
So we can have the document on the screen.
Yeah, so, you know, why don't we shoot for, Jim, you're thinking three weeks?
Well, yeah, because two weeks is Thanksgiving, so.
The week after Thanksgiving?
The first week of December.
Okay, so yeah.
And I did have just a quick answer to your question. Did the current ethics board, do they are involved in this process? Have given their feedback already, so it's reflected in this, they don't need, we don't need to-
Yes, just like this board has had some changes in its composition, there is one new member of our board and, uh, and one that is no longer on the board. But the majority of the board was involved over a period of many months in drafting this document.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we're shooting for December 3rd, yeah, is that right, Thursday, December 3rd? That's what, that's the date I see for the work session, first week of December. Jim?
Hmm? I'm sorry.
December 3rd?
Yeah.
10 o'clock?
Works for me.
Okay, likely via Zoom.
Yeah, actually, that would be preferable, because we can see the document in front of us as we're talking and-
Yeah, I think, we're gonna have some issues with town, the next town board meeting, whether it's been noticed as an in-person meeting, whether it is time to change that, Kathleen, to make that a Zoom meeting. But maybe we can, well, we can talk about that after we're done with Steve, when we get into the COVID issues. But, uh, I, it's, it's going to be challenging now. I can't, we have 10 seats in the audience and another 10 people who support, you know, the town board plus support staff is gonna make it over the limit, as I understand it, so. Okay, all right.
Does the size of the room matter?
No.
No.
No, well, we can ask that to Ryan, but so, uh, we, or, any other questions for Steve?
Just one, do we currently have a handbook for new hires?
Yes.
Okay.
But it does not include the Code of Ethics, right? The handbook, there is a handbook. It does not include the Code of Ethics, it's, it's other issues.
We do attest that they received that handbook.
And the financial disclosure portion of this, has that changed from our current code? I'm just, a quick scan, it didn't look like it had changed that.
Yes, it's, it's a new form.
Totally new.
Yeah, and we're also-
There's some extra categories in there.
Another issue that came up with the comptroller was a certain category of officer and employee who are not required to file disclosure statements, but appear on the list. And we, we've cleaned that, we've cleaned that up a little bit.
Yeah, because I think there's some proprietary issues, too, for disclosures and, you know, for employees in certain conditions.
Right, sure, yes.
I'm wondering, as somebody who's also a Pine Barrens Commissioner, and I go through training, I think it's yearly or every other year, as a, you know, as a member of a state commission, we, we do an online training, ethics training. And, um, you know, I have to read a section and answer questions and, and pass it online that I, you know, understand the code. I wonder if we could have our IT department develop a similar online training? You know, and not that there's anything wrong with having a group of town employees being able to ask questions of an instructor, but I did like the online training. I thought it was, it was useful.
Right.
And that might be a way to make a broader section of the town workforce have to complete a yearly or every two years, or when they get hired. And we could keep track that they, you know, did answer yes to the right questions or no when, you know, answered appropriately, I should say.
My, my personal view on that is that in-person training is more effective in getting the message across. But I do understand, of course, how burdensome it can be on the town to have to have in-person training for the entire town workforce. So there are certain natural lines of demarcation that can be made between those who perhaps could have in-person training, such as department heads, their deputies, attorneys, and, and the larger workforce that perhaps can do their training online. Or annual online training with periodic in-person training. Or there's another possible line of demarcation, and that is people who hold positions that are sufficiently responsible so that they're required to file financial disclosure forms, and those who do not.
We could have different levels, but as a former teacher like Councilman Scivoni, you know, teaching to a room full of people without an effective measure of, you know, to check for understanding, you know, they could sat there and listened for an hour and not have actually gotten anything out of it.
Sure.
I need some sort of test at the end of it. The online thing gives me that ability to know that they understood what they learned.
Right.
I, I do like it for that, so.
I, I usually judge that by how big a laugh I get at the joke, the joke I tell.
I never get a laugh, so.
And teaching individuals is important. You can, you can gauge your audience pretty, pretty effectively now.
One time-
Retention is certainly an issue, but you can tell who's listening and who isn't and who's interacting.
One time when I gave an ethics program, at a certain point, I, I finished a kind of a dry topic and I said, "Congratulations, you've just finished the most boring part of my lecture." And a voice from the back of the room called out, "We'll be the judge of that."
At least somebody was listening. All right, so, but I guess we could figure that out. We do have a very good IT department who could easily develop an online, you know, a-
Sure.
Test of some sort.
Sure.
Well, I, I wonder if these other municipalities that have adopted this have wrestled with similar issue. I know there's a video here that, that I haven't watched yet that was referenced in here for the Town of Oyster Bay.
Yeah, that was a presentation to the town board.
Yeah, okay.
The, the, the town attorney for the Town of Huntington has asked me to prepare a video. So that, one of the requirements is that new hires within six months of coming on board have to have ethics training. And he has, he has asked me to prepare a video, to be videotaped, giving a program for those people. I have not yet done it, but I can do something similar here, coordinate with the IT department. We can, we can make that happen. The Town of Oyster Bay, which recovered not long ago from a very well-publicized scandal, was extremely committed and aggressive about developing an ethics program. And they actually had me train the entire town workforce over multiple occasions.
There has to be videos-
So time will tell.
There's gotta be stuff already out there, educational material, you know, where they actually role-play, you know?
There are, but remember that while Article 18 has statewide application, and you can, for example, go to the New York City conflict of, well, even they aren't, aren't using Article 18. There are programs out there, but if you want one tailored to your town Code of Ethics, we have to develop ourselves, yeah.
All right, and we could, we could work on that.
Steve also lectures at the Association of Towns on this very subject.
You know, I could see potentially, you know, through our IT department, the ability to, you know, play the video or, or do some short lecture and then have everybody on their, you know, phone devices answer the questions there linked through the internet, so we could see if they passed or not. They would get a question, answer it, next question, answer it.
Sure, how does the-
So you could do both at once. You could have the lecture and the quiz at the end, all electronic.
Sure.
And, you know, I think we could probably set that up.
And we do some of that already in the town, in other, in other areas where-
Right.
An online, you know, you answer a series of questions.
Cybersecurity does that.
Sure, I was gonna ask how the town-
Fail ethics.
I was gonna ask how the town trains on sexual harassment, which is another area that-
In person.
That's in person.
In person, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't know if there's a quiz that's associated with that, I don't recall. I think you just, you sit through the hour.
I think you had to just record the hours, if I recall.
Right, but that concerns me as an educator. You know, somebody could be sitting through the hour, they're texting the whole time, not paying attention, and that's not good enough. There has to be some checking for understanding.
Sure.
And I know we discussed something similar to that in our affirmative action task force, you know, in relationship to, to hiring practices also, you know, it's more, there, there would be some ethical conflicts or sort of potential ethical problems in the way hiring and interviewing and all that sort of thing occurs, particularly in the nature of the questions asked. So, you know, I, I appreciate this very much and, you know, I just wish I'd been able to read more of it.
But that's all right, we're gonna do, we're gonna do another work session in three weeks.
Well, thank you, thank you all very much.
Before you leave, the municipalities that you mentioned earlier, I had Humst- Huntington, Hempstead, Oyster Bay, the Village of Sag Harbor, it's also pending in, in the County of Westchester, where else?
And the Village of Southampton has adopted a very similar code also. The Village of Southampton, Village of Sag Harbor, towns of Oyster Bay, Hempstead, Huntington, and it's under consideration, it's actually in the, working, it's, it's, it's been vetted through the Board of Ethics and the County Executive's Office, and now is working its way through the county ledge in Westchester.
Got it, thank you.
But it's still arbitrated within the, the local ethics boards.
Yes.
There's no plan for the state to, you know, as this becomes more of a consistent document across the state, then that would be arbitrated in other venues, because our codes are different.
The codes are different.
You don't expect anything like that to occur.
You know, over, the, the Article 18 of the General Municipal Law was adopted in the 1960s. And over the years, there have been constant efforts by, by bar associations, municipal associations, and other groups to persuade the legislature to update it, modernize it, bring it into the 21st century. And those efforts all fail. The reason they fail is that ethics reform is a very tough political lift for very good reasons. On the one hand, nobody wants to be perceived as diluting ethics. At the same time, people are afraid that too stringent an ethics code is going to be used by a political adversary as a club to beat them over the head with. So you get that, that conflict there, and so it's difficult. And the, the one thing that is very much to be avoided is ethics reform that takes place in the wake of a scandal. Because after a scandal, ethics reform tends to be a narrow overreaction to a particular problem, rather than a general, across-the-board thoughtful review of the entire, the entire law and its, and its implementation. So that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to, at a time when you can calmly and thoroughly- 和 thoroughly 阐核的时候
不 reactionary
对， exactly exactly
谢谢
我想因为这是下一个但 好的，它是 在 gifts 上它是一个 aggregation 对吧，所以 你知道，我想吃午饭 他们拿走了 bill 它比 $75 低他们不能把同样的 council 人一个月后再做一次它是一个 yearly aggregation
是的
这是正确的吗
这是正确的现在现在 ethics 规则 on gifts 是针对 gifts 产生 impropriety 的 appearance gifts 给予的 circumstances 可能让一个人一个其他人 intended either induce an official act 或者 reward an official act 如果真的有 actual quid pro quo 那是当然一个犯罪而且即使礼物给了 after the act has occurred 没有 advance agreement 一个礼物作为奖励对一个 official act 是是 misdemeanor the the crime of
regardless of size
regardless of dollar one 对和但那需要 actual intent ethics code 是设计在 appearance 确保它不像 intended 那样如果它真的 intended 那样它就变成了 criminal matter
所以当 governor拿出笔 当他签名
对， 我们作为 exception 小的 promotional 颗小价值
对
你会如何 who appears frequently in front of a board 或者建筑部门 whatever it might be
or attorney
decides to provide a lunch as a 你知道 for the entire department free of charge courtesy of，你知道 Joe's Construction Corporation bills，whatever it is，你知道 Act Me Construction are although there's nothing specific there and each person is not receiving something greater than $75 in value the there is sort to me seems like the appearance of currying favor
对
or good PR within an entire department how how would that be viewed by this ethics code what's your sense on something
当我在这些年与这样的问题呈现我我问了像 how widely distributed was it or how narrow if it's a particular unit from which all the business is derived that's one set of facts if it's a large department that's another how attenuated in time is it between some business interaction and
让我们看具体的例子建筑公司买午餐给整个建筑部门
which is part of a larger department
对
ethical, unethical how does the ethics code treat that
对
让我们说它需要 $500 去做那个来招待 30或50 个人没有特定的请求 nothing
对，我们的 我们的 code 我们的 proposed code 说 no town officer or employee shall accept any gift, tip or other benefit from a person who the town officer or employee knows or has reason to know has received or sought a financial benefit from the town within the previous 24 个月所以问题你会和 wrestle 一起是 whether this is a gift to a particular to a particular person 我会说 gifts to the municipality are not prohibited gifts although only this board has the legal authority to accept a gift on behalf of the municipality 我 often also look at the circumstances during Superstorm Sandy when people during the covid
对
covid crisis
如果 somebody 想感谢整个部门对所有他们做的事
对，对 当人们无法回家他们在 24 个小时的 shift 他们累了他们饿了和一些好 Samaritan 想帮助他们魔鬼总是细节当谈到 ethics 她进来的时候有巧克力饼干的碗在假期 别走，你邪恶的人 拿那些饼干不
但那不是 intent 你知道，这是 perception what the intent was of that gift
是的
和它变成一个非常 subjective 那种分析在那个意义上然后你必须 investigating 到一定程度
它可以真正的 code 提供并不构成 distinction article 18 是关于 intent 它关于 appearances 和 intent 我们但那是种模糊标准你怎么知道什么行为是或不是禁止你想给人们指导你不想他们要冒风险 that the board of ethics 是会看到的
你不想他们惹麻烦做他们认为正确的事情他们想成为好的
对所以这个 code 尝试做出一个明确的规则和说如果你要请求礼物你的责任是找出他们是否与镇在过去的我想是 24 个月
但它也提示政策
是的
会禁止或者会使得那不可能
对，如果你 如果你收到不 solicited gift 一个你没有请求你没有责任调查但是如果你知道那个人与镇有关系它它是禁止的 现在，那些规则 intended 来应用你描述的场景如果是我的决定我会根据 case by case 基本 whether the particular facts and circumstances 在我的观点会摧毁公共信任在政府或不是例如 covid 或者 Superstorm Sandy 情况我认为不会引起 anyone to feel that government was
如果让我创造一个不同的场景可能让我们说一个高尔夫球场所有让我们说警察 officers 在特定的白天 offseason，October 他们可以免费参加作为感谢警察部门的所有工作他们所做的 ethical 和 non ethical 可接受和不可接受
我认为这是对我认为 police appreciation day 如果它是 department wide 而且不是在特定 official act 或者 induce 一个 official act 就不会符合我们谈论的规则
因为他们正在作为警察 officers 官方能力
对，不是 不是，他们 他们正在打高尔夫但但我我觉得 under 那那网被广泛地扔出去而且它与特定 official act 连接不上我觉得没问题
午餐给建筑部门可能会没问题按照同样的逻辑
除非有 application pending 或者有
不
有 something that was not necessarily
depending on the facts and circumstances 我之所以声称要给你直接答案是因为 你知道，它 它你真的需要深入分析一个特定的案例以便能够做出 definitive 回答而且你不想设定 abstract 和 你知道，尤其是 perishable food items sometimes 它来了你要做什么把它扔出去送回去所以你需要 rational policy decisions 做关于 perishable food items 你不想是 individual officers and employees 做决定因为那样他们会拔刀你想要一些
它也需要
现在
在 role 上 the employee or employees are playing whether it's purely administrative or whether they actually 你知道，有 yes or no say
当然
我觉得这也有区别 whether it's something pending 它不是它不是那么简单可能超过一个简单的 ethics policy 可以覆盖但是这就是你有 ethics board 你可以随时去那里和 interpretation 如果它灰色
对
对不起
和 consideration 可能不是实时的它可能未来 consideration 或者 something that 是 coming down the bike where 你知道，午餐并不 necessarily 连接到那个 和，顺便说 午餐 你知道， 有大差不差一个 bagel 和一个 carving station
对
和你知道当它来了你知道当 something 是过头
我同意
很难量化
我不知道，这取决于 bagels
我知道一个县 attorney whose 我知道我知道一个县 attorney whose rule 是如果它是巧克力你可以接受它但但 the 但但我看到 godiva 巧克力你得 mortgage 你的房子去买
对
所以即使那里有 distinction 要做的所以
Like ceremonial shovels with value.
Right. Well, I am available anytime. I can't tell you how grateful I am and how grateful the Board of Ethics is for the commitment that you have to this project. So thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you're doing. It's, it's really important.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Okay. So everybody review it December 3rd. We'll go through the changes between the current code and the proposed code, and then we'll set a public hearing. Thank you, Kathleen. Okay. Next on our agenda, actually, I'd like to bring Ryan forward. The guidance has changed. I'll send you over to the microphone, Ryan. One of his many hats is our COVID coordinator, Public Safety Director. And we've been working together to try to keep people safe and lower the incidence of this deadly virus and try to conform to the changing guidance at the state. And the governor just changed the guidance again, so.
That's correct.
So can you kind of get, just, you want to talk about that? Talk about the numbers? Talk about whatever you, we need to know?
Sure. Yeah, the biggest, there were a couple of changes that were announced within the last day. And, and we've, we've seen this happen throughout the pandemic so far. And a lot of times, these things get announced by the governor at, at press conferences, and we have to await the actual written order to follow it. So we, we, we know what we've heard, but we don't know what has shown up in writing necessarily yet on some of these things. The biggest changes are the ones that we've heard probably in the last, you know, 18 hours or so, which is that there are limitations being re-imposed on restaurants and dining establishments and gyms due to increased spread in the state. They are now requiring anyone that has a liquor license, is our current understanding of this new rule, to cease in-person operations as of 10 o'clock at their establishments. The, the establishment can still engage in takeout orders, so they can still have operations running to, is our current understanding, but for takeout only. But in-person operations with dining guests at an establishment have to cease as of 10:00 PM, and this is effective as of tomorrow night. That's our current understanding. We have all
That means it's a close, so everybody who's dining
Has to be out by 10:00.
Out by 10:00.
Yeah. I, I would imagine that there's a degree of latitude there that if you're finishing up your dining and there's no continued service going on, and you're out by, you know, 10:15, nobody's probably going to come and chase after you, but.
Restaurants should then judge at
When they should stop service and stop taking diners in. Yeah, without a doubt. They need to know. And, and I'm sure that most of them, as they have been throughout the pandemic, are tuned into this quite closely. But I will tell you that we are also conducting outreach from the Fire Marshal's Office today to all of our, our assembly spaces within the town of Southampton that we have email contact for to make sure that they're aware that this change is occurring. We're not sending that out until the end of the day because we do have a call with the state at 1:00 today.
Yes.
Where we hope some additional light will be shed on specifically what the requirements are. Because it, again, I said, our understanding is that this is for locations that have a liquor license. So if you're a, an establishment that doesn't serve any alcohol whatsoever, if you're a McDonald's or Burger King or, you know, establishments like that, you may be allowed to still have people in after 10:00. This is a question that we hope to have answered today as of the 1:00 call with the state. We're not 100% sure on that.
Are you going to establish some kind of enforcement detail?
We'll be sending people out. We actually have
I think it's important to know because, you know, the governor likes to say, local government, do your job.
Yep, without a doubt.
They make the rules where tasked with enforcing the rules, so.
We had a meeting at the Fire Marshal's Office this morning to discuss precisely this. There has been some controversy with the state from day one of this in terms of how exactly to write up a, an establishment if you're conducting enforcement because it's a violation of the health code. Our, our answer to this is going to be, as far as the Fire Marshal's Office is concerned, the police have the capability to do some enforcement on the SLA side of things. We will view any structure that's not complying with the executive order as being in violation of New York State Fire Code 1082, which is an unlawful structure that has a risk to the public health in any way, shape, or form. And we're also putting all of, like I said, the assembly spaces on notice of this. It's basically a change to their occupancy for the assembly space as well. After 10:00, they're, they're not allowed to have occupants inside. So if, if they are occupying the structure by anyone other than just their employees to conduct takeout business, we're going to view it as a violation of their occupancy.
Are we giving them warnings? Are we giving them tickets?
We will continue to issue warnings first before we go to summonses. This is, as we've maintained throughout the pandemic, this is a difficult enough situation on people. It's, it's stressing them, you know, in many different ways. And certainly, this isn't going to be another economic stressor to any of these establishments. We don't really wish to add insult to injury by having to summons them, so we will begin with an inform and warn campaign. But if people are knowingly violating this order and putting people in danger by their actions, we will take the appropriate action to bring them into compliance.
Okay.
We hope to not have to go that far.
Does this 10:00 occupancy restriction down to zero include eating inside, outside, in a tent?
It's, it's on premise, anything on premise. So the exterior dining and the interior dining is, is, to our understanding of this new rule right now, is all of it's off limits, takeout only. All right? So, and that will be clarified in the letter that's being prepared right now to go out to all the assembly spaces so that they understand that it's not just a limitation on indoor. All the existing limitations during those hours ahead of 10:00 PM are in place still, the 50%, you know, occupancy rule from the state. The outdoor dining can still occur with spacing and everything else, but then after 10:00, everything's off the table.
Can we get a copy of that letter in case we
Yes, without a doubt. Yep, without a doubt.
Of course, that's not the only change. There was
So gyms as well, after 10:00 are also closed as of this point, too.
And then gatherings now, indoor gatherings?
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to get hopefully some clarification at the 1:00 call on that. My understanding is that that is for private gatherings. It's specifically intended with the upcoming holidays to try and minimize the number of people gathering privately for any kind of, you know, a family or party. Otherwise, I don't know that we would have the same implications for our activity as an essential activity of government. We'll have to get clarification on that today from, from the state on the call.
Yeah, a question's been, been asked a few times today, but also I've gotten personal questions like that as well.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll have an answer by like 2:00 today as to whether or not that specifically is targeted at private.
All right, thank you.
And it'll be followed up with something in writing from the state that we can definitively look at and say, that's
That's what, I was trying to locate some of that this morning.
Even if we are allowed to, we know with the executive order related to the open meetings law, we, we're allowed to do this via Zoom. So we might, even if we're allowed to have more than 10, we might choose to go back to Zoom meetings until the numbers calm down.
Sure.
To stay with the spirit of the idea that we shouldn't have more than 10 people gathered together. But that's a choice I guess I could make through executive order. Well
Yeah, I mean, it, you know.
That is sort of the direction of thinking because I, I believe that it did apply to us as well.
Right. We, we will find out for sure whether or not, we may, our hands might be tied on that. You may have to go the Zoom route if you can't have more than, than 10 people in even this room for a
But as you say, it might be the right thing to do, Jay, considering what's, you know, what we're starting to see and what's happening nationally and
Right.
Most municipalities are full Zoom right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about enforcement of the private home 10-person rule? How are we going to enforce that?
I believe that would be a question better directed to the police department than me. We, we could look at it on a code side of things again. This is going to be more of an inform and warn type situation, I think, more than anything else. I'm sure we'll be getting calls on it as we have in the past. There are a lot of questions there. You have homes that, that can naturally have 10 or more cohabitants living there together. You know, obviously, I'm sure that the, the order from the governor is not intended for you to say that two of the regular residents of the house need to leave if you have 12 to make it down to 10. So is it 10 guests on top of the normal occupants of the home? This is a question that has to be answered.
Are they related? Are they not of a degree of relation?
Do they live as a family unit?
I think that's fair to say that that may be a policy of this board, how we want to direct our code enforcement and our police. I, I can say that, you know, I have no interest in splintering people's doors over, you know, two extra ants at a Thanksgiving. But, you know, it is more of a guideline for the people of the state of New York from the governor. And, okay, and if we receive complaints, then it's, it's
We have an obligation to investigate complaints.
If we have, if we receive the complaints.
You know, I
But we're not driving around looking in people's picture windows.
The enforcement side of the town of Southampton, whether it's the code enforcement, Fire Marshal's Office, or the police department, has been, has been very level-headed about the enforcement of all of the different orders throughout this entire pandemic. As I said before, we're not looking to hurt people more than they're already hurting.
Okay, because this scares the heck out of people.
And so if people are acting reasonably, I think we will
Common sense.
treat them as reasonably acting people.
Clearly, Thanksgiving is coming. I think the governor is concerned about all the people that will be gathering together for Thanksgiving. These types of rules, I think, are largely self-enforcing.
Yeah.
You know, you could work to your benefit if you have issues with your mother-in-law. You could say, sorry, I've got 10.
I know this conversation would go there at some point.
Sorry, I can't have you come over this year, but
People should act responsibly and intelligent. You know, if you, if
We're not
If you can keep your crowd size down, you should do whatever you can to try and do so.
But don't get clarification after your 1:00 and
You know, we had
What we get from the governor.
You know, we, a lot of people, when the, when the limit was at 10 people for gatherings in general, indoor, outdoor, most people complied with it. We had no ability to police that broadly, you know.
No, it's very challenging because if, if they are cohabitants or they, they stated that they were, that made it a challenge for us on the enforcement side.
It's very hard if you can't only have 10 people gathered and there's a bonfire in the summer with 12 people. We don't have enough staff to
No, but we've learned a lot.
And we, we won't be entering households to inspect, you know, how many people are inside of it either.
No, we can't go in without warrants.
I doubt we would be getting any kind of warrants to do so. That seems quite extreme.
Thank you, because, you know, we come under some criticism of that. You know, the governor says something, and then, you know, people look at the town and say, well, what are they going to do now? And we really want people to be safe and healthy.
I think it's more of a, as, as you guys have already stated, I think it's more of a public message than the fact that anybody's going to be knocking on doors so much.
Some people will, will actually comply with it, I believe.
I hope they do.
They will, I think a lot of people will.
I think the majority of people do it. It just simply makes sense.
They'll do it, and if they were thinking of having a large gathering for Thanksgiving, they might split up and have two gatherings, you know.
Or separate times.
Or try it outside, the weather.
People in at different times, whatever. There are ways to deal with this.
You know, I think we all have to work together to get the numbers down, so.
So our numbers are up a little bit, as, as you're aware. Just, just for the purposes of, of understanding, we were at about 1,400, I'm sorry, 1,351 in terms of our, our positive tests within the town.
That's a cumulative number, right?
That's a cumulative number. That doesn't mean right now. That's, it's just, that's the total from the beginning. For the town, it was at 1,351 on October 29th. We were at 1,468 as of the 9th of November. That's about a 9.75 person increase daily, if you take the average out, so 10 people per day increase. Just to, for comparative basis, it's, it's about a five-person per day increase over that same time period for, for East Hampton. It's about a six and change person per day increase for, for Riverhead. But if you look at Brookhaven, which is a much larger and more populous township, it is a 56 person per day increase for the town of Brookhaven over that same time period. So in the grand picture of things, we're, we're doing okay, but we need to continue to try and hold those numbers down. There was definitely a bigger increase around November 6th and 7th. People just interacting more with one another, increased spread. We, we knew we were going to see some increases with, with kids going back to school and the abilities to interact in, in those types of settings. So it's not necessarily unexpected to see some of these numbers, but we still have to definitely continue to make efforts to hold the numbers down. Mask wearing is, is a key component of that and
Do you know the incident rate in terms of those people getting tested, that are testing positive?
I don't have that percentage in front of me.
I mean, I know for the county it's
I think we're somewhere around 3.8% right now.
Yeah, I think what I saw yesterday was
The county is
The county, yeah. I, I don't know if I have a specific breakdown.
It's closing in on that 4%.
It is.
That becomes problematic.
And, and again, that's a negative. The, the positive aspect is that compared to where we were, and hopefully, we continue on this trend, compared to where we were in the spring with the number of those people that A ended up hospitalized or B ended up hospitalized and intubated and in ICUs, those numbers are still down. But we have to be very careful that those, that we don't allow those numbers to go, go back up. You know, they've made advances, I think, on the medical side in terms of understanding how to deal with the virus a little bit and how to keep people from getting so far gone that they ended up intubated. But it, once the system starts to get overwhelmed to a certain point, that, the quality of care that's going to be able to be rendered because it's going to get saturated is going to be problematic for us, and we just have to keep it from getting there.
Yeah, and I think they've done a pretty good job. I mean, I think we're still at 30% roughly of available beds.
Yes.
With ICU and, and otherwise, so it sounds
What are we doing with the, the big duck lighting? I guess that's a county event, but there's a number of Christmas tree lightings. Has the governor issued guidance yet on, on those holiday events, outdoor holiday events?
No. And we just actually recently submitted a event to the state for Hampton Bays for a magical sleigh ride drive-through. Was no stopping along the way. It was just passing through neighborhoods so that the kids could come out and wave to, to Santa Claus. And, and we don't have a judgment on that from the state yet, whether or not it's a permissible event. So similarly, we hope to have clarity on that within the next day or two so that people can plan appropriately. I think most large gathering events of any sort are, are, are being canceled. You know, a lot of the typical parades that we would see with people lining the streets and things like that, those can't happen. We can't put that many people into a space at a time. You'll end up with a, a super-spreader event. But some of these other smaller events, although the, you know, the duck lighting would typically draw in excess of 50 people, which would be far beyond
It is a county event.
It is.
And so I think ultimately, but they do it on our property.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I would have concerns about that event this year. It's such a nice event and the kids love it, but I just, you know, I don't know how you do that with the kid, the way they line up and each kid sits on Santa's lap, you know,
It'd be very tough to regulate the people without having a, and we've, we've considered this with, you know, even earlier in the season when we looked at whether or not we could pull off, you know, concerts in Good Ground Park and things like that. When it, when a space is, is more free-flowing and you don't have it fenced off and very controlled, it's very tough to start to even go down the pathway of engaging an event like that because your ability to stop people from coming in or know how many precisely are there and, and coming and going is really troublesome. And, and then it becomes also cost prohibitive in terms of trying to implement the control mechanisms to actually do, do it and do it safely and successfully. So it's, it's really tough to try and pull an event like that off because you, you don't know how many will show, and to try and turn people away from a family-friendly event like that is a, is a really tough thing to do, too. And to try and have an event like that and then create maybe sectioned-off areas so you can control the flow more becomes really troublesome as well in terms of the number of resources that we would have to dedicate to pulling something like that off successfully. So there are a lot of issues there, and I think at this point, most of the public understands that we want to try and do things, but we have to contend with all of those other elements that I just mentioned, and, and that's, that's where we're at with this. It's, this is a, it's a off year. It's a bad year. It's, it's a lot of trouble, and, you know, we're all just trying to get through it and hopefully, you know, come out and have a, a much safer and more successful, you know, 2021, I think, at this point. It's, this is, it's tough.
Yesterday, Suffolk County had 4,800 new cases reported. It's about the numbers that we were seeing in May. You know
No, that's not right. 400, not 4,800. Suffolk County? It was maybe 450, maybe 480 new cases.
Yeah.
Not 4,000 cases.
Was 4,800 tested perhaps?
I'm looking on the New York Times website by county COVID-19.
And it said yesterday there were 4,800 positives?
It might be the tested number.
Look, if you're on a call and you're hearing something different, don't let me quote incorrect.
I think that might be high. I think that might be tested, more like tested individuals in, in the county. 4,800 positives seems like a higher number than
Okay, then, never mind.
Yeah, we just got Amanda's numbers, the state numbers, as well as the, and I, I don't have them on my
I don't, yeah, I don't, I know what that is, but in terms of new cases?
I don't, I don't recall that, but that may be the total.
Yeah, four, typically, you know, I, I thought I saw yesterday, and it alarmed me, there was about 400 positives in Suffolk County, new positives, but let's double-check that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the, the data, too.
Well, I would also say that since the last time that we spoke, it's worth noting that there have been changes to the travel restrictions. Basically, that you can test out of travel quarantine at this point is the change. If you travel outside of the state and you come back and you, you wish to quarantine for 14 days, I guess, you could. But if you get a test on the fourth day after return, basically on the fourth day after your, your last exposure to the, the other area, and your test comes up negative, you can basically test out of quarantining.
Let me just get that information. So the, yesterday, there were 412 new cases in the county, 3.4% of those tested.
Yeah.
There was one new fatality, bringing the fatality total to 2,023 in the county, and the 77 individuals hospitalized, 13 in ICU. But I, the New York Times, which has great data, there might be, I'm not sure what you were seeing.
That might be wrong, yeah.
Well, I, I like your numbers much.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, Ryan.
So I was just mentioning the new travel regulations, then the ability that, to test on the fourth day after return, and if testing negative, you can release from the quarantine. You're still supposed to quarantine for three days.
Availability of testing? Is it a
Pretty widespread availability at this point.
Okay, but I know, like, because this came up, somebody called me the other day, a couple of his employees, he was concerned about wanting to get him tested. The clinic, no, not the clinic, the hospital here, you still need a prescription.
Prescription to get tested from the hospital.
Well, you can go to Stony Brook, not Stony, Stony Brook Southampton, you could go to Stony Brook Main Campus as a drive-through. You don't need anything to use that facility.
I'd have to, I'd have to check on the status of the reservation.
But I think the prescription's very easily obtainable, though.
Yes, and you can go to, most pharmacies offer it at this point. You know, your CVSs and Walgreens and Rite Aid-type locations.
Without a prescription?
Yeah.
You just pay for it?
Walk-in, walk-up clinics, I think.
And, yes, and a lot of like the City MDs, I, I think they took over Stat Health, but the, the Pro Health or, or whatever, though, a lot of those you can just walk in and get
Now, is that the rapid test or is that the PCR test?
The City MD, I think, is the rapid test.
A lot of them offer both.
You gotta ask for it, yeah.
Lot of them offer both, and you have to specify which test you'd like. And remember, the rapid has a larger degree of error in terms of the results. 70 or 80% success rate in terms of getting a
Yeah.
a good result, whereas the, the nasal swab testing are closer towards, you know, 90% or better reliability on their test.
Typically, they want you to do it again just to confirm. You can have false negatives.
Yeah.
You can have false positives, so, you know, in that limited amount.
Are we looking to do anything again with our workforce like we did the one time?
We've actually been in communication with the company to perhaps come back in and either A offer, you know, testing, or, or B, we've, we're looking at the possibility of having the mobile unit come in to offer flu vaccinations, make that available to people, or some, some physical capabilities as well. So we are looking at that for our own workforce.
Good.
As some options just to try and make sure that our staff is as safe as possible. And, and if people haven't checked it out yet, I would also encourage looking at the, the COVID New York Alerts app, if you're not familiar with it. We're having discussions internally about the possible use amongst, you know, town employees, but it's something that was created by the state to be able to gauge if you're within six feet of another person. And again, the information is only as good as what's going into the app and whether or not somebody else is using it, and I don't know that there's necessarily widespread use yet, but if you're within six feet of a person who ends up checking that they're positive and you've been within that six-foot for, for 10 minutes, you will get a, an alert from the app to take action, to get tested or to, to try and isolate. So it's, it's something that's out there as another tool that you could make use of potentially. And I see you waving it near Jay.
We're okay.
Alarm going off?
No alarm, not off.
All right, any, anything else from Ryan?
I think that's all I've got for you.
Okay. Any other matters that we should know about, public safety, health? We're good?
No, we're okay.
We've been following a little bit of a situation, not necessarily a situation, but a, the bunker are back in certain areas in the pecanics in high numbers, but we haven't had a large-scale die-off like we did several years ago before you were here in Schenectock Bay, but we're, the trustees are monitoring that situation because that did create complexities for us when we had a million dead fish floating around Schenectock Bay and washing on the shorelines and, you know, decomposing, creating all kinds of issues, but
Now, we're going to have a lot of fishermen looking for
So far, we seem okay. The last report I got from trustee Horowitz yesterday seemed pretty positive. He's giving me readings of the dissolved oxygen levels in different areas and the fluctuations there, and it seems like we, we might so far get through this. We'll, we'll see.
Great, because we don't need to add that to 2020.
Yeah, they're trying to, they're trying to allow the bunker fishermen to take a higher quota, but to do so, they need to trade quota with another area. I think they've identified an area that has unused quota that can be transferred to us, but the trustees have been working on it. It sounds like it's under control.
Great.
And you'll get back to us after with some clarifications on the guidance.
Without a doubt.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ryan.
All right.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, other, I do have a 1:00 state call, so hopefully, I'll be able to take that. Is there executive session? I don't see it on the list.
I just have one item that came up with Lisa on a, one of our acquisitions, so that should be very quick.
Okay, we have one item, two in exec. All right, so updates, what we heard from Ryan. The police survey is still on our town website up until the 23rd. There may be additional surveys after that. Some of the clerk committee members are, are trying to see if we can get some additional information. So we might issue a second round. The clerk committee, which Tommy John serves on, we, we met the other day. That, that is going, going well. They're asking for possibly a youth member, a, a younger voice to be on the committee too, so we're exploring that. And today, today, there's a ceremony for Captain Shurik, who is, I don't think today is his last day. It's coming soon.
It's a walkout.
But it's his walkout. It's his kind of official ceremony where he gets thanked for his service. And I think that's 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock.
You know, so you guys are all welcome to go. There's going to be outdoors. I think there's a limitation of 50 people, so they might hit that. But Larry has certainly served with great distinction and we're sorry to see him go. It's under contract, there's, there's, you hit a certain age where it's a mandatory that you separate from service. So it's, it's kind of sad. He's the second highest-ranking member of our department and well-respected by all. He's done, done a great job. And, you know, Larry, for a while, before we identified the current police chief, was really serving in the capacity as chief.
He's a good man.
Handled the department, I thought, expertly. No issues at all during that interim period. He really showed his, his abilities as a leader in the department.
He's certainly a presence.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, physically and otherwise.
He is. He sort of emanates law enforcement, doesn't he, in many ways? So.
He's still a young man, so.
Yeah.
It's been, it's, well, he's, he also had a loss in his family. It's been, you know, it's been a hard year this year for them. But I appreciate Captain Shurik a lot.
Oh, yeah, he's good.
Every, every conversation we have, it's very professional.
Yep, I've, yeah, I've come to know him well and I, I just think he's a great, you know, representative of our, you know, department in law enforcement in general.
He'll definitely be missed.
Absolutely.
He's a huge hole.
So that's happening today and I think that's it. You know, the governor's guidance is something we'll have to follow too. And I'll have to figure out what to do about whether we can continue to have meetings like this. My inclination is we switch back to Zoom. But we've noticed some meetings and so we might want to, anything we haven't noticed, move it to Zoom. What, what, have we noticed the next meeting? I think we have, right?
December 8th.
Yeah, we noticed all those hearings for December 8th, a ton of them, so.
But I think other, under those circumstances, as an executive order, you can.
I believe we could.
Yeah.
I could probably switch it.
Yeah.
Even though we've noticed it. Or we could make provisions, if we are limited to 10, to limit it to 10 and we could, you know, have some staging area somewhere else and get through December 8th and then do the next one. So I'll have to, I'll have to wrestle with that.
That's almost, yeah. Hopefully we're not in a worse situation, December 8th.
Well, remember, we were stretching out the comment period for everything when we were doing the Zooms and anything we have to get done by the end of the year, we're probably going to have to do it December 8th or there, shortly thereafter.
Yeah, well, let's, I guess we'll see what the governor says about official meetings, indoor meetings. But the spirit certainly is no more than 10 in a room. And that, sometimes we can do that. Sometimes we can do that. Some of these hearings, nobody comes to. Most of them, nobody comes to. But that particular day, there was quite a number of them. Do we remember if it's anything controversial per se? No anything controversial?
I don't recall, man.
We'll have to look at all the things we scheduled for December 8th and sort of gauge.
Did we do the water quality one?
Well, that, yeah, that's not, that's, we will discuss that internally.
No, I know, but did we notice it for the same day?
And PDD, I think that's off.
It, it doesn't come to us as a.
You're expecting a lot of people at the Ag PDD hearing?
I'm, I'm not.
No, I wouldn't.
Yeah. What else was scheduled or anybody remember?
You gotta sit down and look at it.
Yeah.
Anything else right now is kind of speculation. It's not in my head, certainly.
You got the agenda from?
We would consider going to Zoom for public participation and public input. Not necessarily for us.
You have to go to the back.
I can't remember what we.
I'll repeat.
Yeah, it's 50 pages of.
Okay, we, we would be considering going to Zoom for public participation and, and, and public viewing in real time of the meeting. Because right now, if there's, if there's, you know, five of us on a board and an attorney, well, that's four people in this room. And if we have a clerk or two, then the public really can interact in the meeting.
Right.
Right, so that's, that's the reason. We probably could be in the room and pull off a safe meeting, but in order to have the public input, it's, it would work better on Zoom. Is that a?
For, for, yeah, for our perspective.
Could you think, you think we could do a hybrid meeting where the public could appear?
That didn't work so good last time.
But that was the first. Or, or maybe it could be controlled somewhere where, when it's somebody's turn to speak, they're allowed into the room. But then they'd have to be in another room where we couldn't have more than 10 people.
Right.
Well, but as you said, we still don't know what the governor's decided to do relative to open meetings.
Right.
Right?
So.
We want public participation. Government has to continue. We're just trying to figure out the best way to do it.
Right, all right, so I will just keep you guys advised as to, it's, it's, my guess is it's probably your preference to do the December 8th meeting via Zoom. Is that correct? Or do it here?
I, I don't have a preference. I just, whatever.
Anybody care?
I always lean towards in-person the more we can do it, but we have to, we have to.
Yeah.
All right, then.
Because we're really, we're, we're, we're sort of in the receiving mode, right? We have to wait and see what, what comes down from.
All right, so let's see what the governor says. Okay, so there's no, it, it sounds actually like the preference might be, if we can do it in person, let's do it in person.
That is my preference.
Well, that's Tommy John's point is that we, we, if it was 10, we would not violate 10, us sitting here without a public. But then we would have to have the public on Zoom as, you know, going through that process.
Well, not necessarily, because with the clerk and some support staff, there's, we're still not at 10. We're.
We're really close to it.
Those five, six, seven, eight. There might be room for, let's say, two people. But if you don't have them in and they're allowed in when it's time to speak and they can view it on a TV set somewhere, we might actually be able to do this.
Right, but we, early on, had decided to take those, you know, those more housekeeping-type meetings and legislation that we were reviewing. And, and we pushed off a lot of the important stuff until we met in person. That's what we did originally. So if we're going to go back to that, we just have to, again, not knowing, you know, what's, what's coming.
We could check it out.
We didn't have a draft.
Most towns are going Zoom now. All our other boards are Zoom and then a lot of towns, the town boards are doing Zoom at this point.
I think our work session certainly could be Zoom because we don't have a public portion at the work session. So there's really no opportunity for the public to weigh in at a meeting like this. We certainly could do this via Zoom. And we talked, discussed that with Council Leventhal earlier, where it actually might be beneficial for a meeting like that where, you know, we could share a screen.
Document sharing, yeah.
Document sharing, so. All right, I'll, I'll take it from there.
Yeah, the three, one was the agricultural conservation district. One, there's one with the battery storage amendment allowing for battery storage. And then there was one dealing with the waste management.
Yeah, the waste management could involve a fair amount of public input.
All right, it could.
Yeah.
That's where they're, we're proposing a fee.
Yeah.
To use the recycling center.
Yeah, well, it's a fee to keep us operational. We're.
So we don't close the recycling.
Yeah.
Right, okay. All right, any, any other updates any of you have? Councilman Lustad.
So we all remember that November is a volunteer recognition month through our youth bureau. So I'm here with the next list of nominated volunteers. So, thank you for the drum roll. The first is our own Southampton Town Trustee, Ann Welker, who was nominated by I Try. Nakai Davis, a Southampton High School senior nominated by Bridgehampton Childcare. Michael White of Southampton nominated by Butterfly Effect Project. Karen Schroder of Sag Harbor nominated by Suffolk County legislator Bridget Fleming. Susan Miles of Flanders nominated by The Butterfly Effect. And Joyce von Knoblock nominated by Hugs, Inc. So I wanted to congratulate all the nominees and again, tell everybody, if you want to read their full bios, please go to our website and read them. And thank you all volunteers for your service.
Where do we find that on the website?
Go to youth.
Services?
Yeah, Youth Services, Youth Bureau, Youth Board. I think on the Youth Bureau, there's a tab that says volunteer recognition.
How many of these, so these are all nominees?
Yes, every nominee is a winner.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Yes, they were sent in by people and if people thought highly enough of somebody.
Did they get a something?
I'm not sure. I know that they used to have a lunch in the past, but due to COVID, we can't do that now, which is why we're doing the virtual. Certificates, yeah, I think that we're thinking about that or I'll double-check with Nancy Line.
Or a layaway for a future lunch.
Right, exactly. And I do have one more. This is a traffic advisory reminder. The eastbound ramp to Sunrise Highway and North Road in Hampton Bays is going to be closed starting November 16th, so leave early.
Oh, well, maybe we should go right to Zoom.
Yeah, because you won't be able to get here.
Yeah.
When is it going to be closed?
Starting November 16th. I think it's for a full week.
Whoa, okay. All right, any other updates? Anybody? All right, so for the executive session, I have one, one.
Well, we didn't, I just have a question. We didn't notice executive. Do we need to do that at all? I guess we can just go right in, right?
Yeah, we can just go.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.